Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning meeting of June 17th, 2021. It's currently 7:01 in the evening, and welcome. My name is John Beely, and I'm the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission, as permitted by the Governor's executive order and indicated in the agenda for this meeting. This meeting may be attended by in-person or by remote video or telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate, and noticed on the agenda posted on the town website. For those of you attending, I would like to ask you that you mute yourself if you're able to, so that we do not get any background noise. Please be advised that the public hearing is listed, and item 2A on the agenda is being postponed due to a notice error. The public hearing has been reposted for a remote meeting on Tuesday, June 29, 2021, at 5:00 in the afternoon to hear the application of Doug O'Leary, Carol Tim Sullivan, Esquire, for the special permit use of a full-circle golf academy at 170 Deming Road with a related amendment to the approved unified site plan for Deming Road Business Park. I have two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, you must be careful not to speak over one another, so that everyone who is listening can hear what is being said, and we will have a clear record of it. For this reason is necessary, when it comes time for the commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before any action is taken, and then to vote on any agenda item, our planner, Maureen Giuseci, will call the role as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded, and recording will be posted on the town's website. New information, since the posting yesterday, will be posted tomorrow. I'm going to ask Maureen that she take attendance by calling the rule. Thank you.
John Michael O'Brien?
He is absent.
Present.
Diane Joycey?
Here.
Kennedy Zigmat?
There.
Brian Rogan?
Here.
John Beely?
Here.
Steve Womack?
Here.
Peter Zeroboso?
Here.
Andrew Lignani?
Here.
Steve Yadalekina?
I'm here.
All right, and so for the purpose of this meeting, I know that John Michael O'Brien is absent, but I'm going to ask Peter Zeroboso, please, I mean, Andrew Lignani, please be seated for him for the duration of the commission meeting. Thank you. All right, so on to, we, I just want to get my agenda here, sorry. The public hearing, which has been postponed, so that was item 2. Item 3 is Commissioner Business. Up first is a discussion about the POCD, the Social Selection Overview and Update, and I'm just going to give this briefly, and then we're going to turn it over to our selected company. There was a group of us that met to hold some interviews. It was readily put together by Maureen and Jim Mahoney, and there were three candidates for the position for the POCD, Service Consultant, and we interviewed the three over the course of two days. We did have a discussion afterwards, and then a final wrap-up and discussion after the third. We have come up to the service with the company, FHI Consultants, and we do have, we have Francisco on the line. Francisco, are you with us? Hello?
We are. Both Ken and I are here. Hello.
Congratulations, and you had a wonderful presentation. We're very excited about moving forward with you. Could you just spend just a few minutes to just, you have basically the group with you that you're going to be working closely with, just sort of give us an idea, or just a synopsis of your presentation, please?
Yeah, I will give you, can I go, do I have time to go, very briefly, go through the presentation to get everyone on board? Do we have time for that?
Yeah, I know that you also are at time constraints, so I'm trying to be sensitive to that.
Right, right. Okay, so, well, we prepared a shorter version of the presentation we gave last week to the selection committee, and I think it'll help the rest of the commissioners just get an understanding of what it is that we've proposed to do and to know a little bit about us. So with that said, we will share our screen, and we will run the presentation. And, presentation mode. And I take it everyone can see the screen now?
Yes.
Good, good. First, let me take a break to introduce myself. I'm Francisco Gomes. I'm a senior project manager and director of our New England Mobility and Land Use Service Line here at FHI Studio, and I am joined by Ken.
Ken Livingston. I'm a principal at FHI Studio and lead our projects and client services group.
Okay, and we are located in Hartford. I'm a Hartford resident. I grew up in Farmingtons of Berlin. It's very familiar to me. All right, so if we go to our next slide, we are also joined by RKG, and RKG is our sub-consultant, and they are experts in economic and real estate planning, including developing affordable housing plans, which they're working with a few communities here in Connecticut, and we brought them on for those exact roles. FHI Studio, we are a comprehensive firm, and we have experts in transportation, community planning, land use, zoning, environmental sciences, community engagement. So we're a broad-service planning firm. However, for this project, we've put together a smaller core team of people that will be regulars to the project and involved in all technical aspects of the work, and that's basically everyone you see here. I am the project manager. Ken is the senior advisor, so he'll oversee the entire process, but I'm managing the day-to-day of progress, and I'm managing all of our technical work. Marcy Miller, who's shown to the right of me there, will be leading community engagement. Marcy is West Hartford resident, and she has lots of experience leading community engagement in communities of all sides. In addition to that, we have some extremely competent staff in really all the subject areas that you would need to develop both the plan and conservation and development and an affordable housing plan. Our approach to the work, we've organized this presentation around some of the core elements of the work, and that really starts with both project coordination, which is working with you, the commission, and the town, the town's project manager. Equally important is community engagement, so that's working with your residents and other key stakeholders. So I'll walk you through these as we go along here. Our project schedule, collaboration with you begins right away, ostensibly tonight, and then community engagement, we need to get our feet on the ground first and understand your community a little better and get prepared before we launch with them, but we would like to do that fairly early in the process, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that involves. Right away, we begin existing conditions work, and that's the work of gathering all the information, the data, the maps, everything that goes into both of the plans. And one of the first deadlines that we really need to hit is the development of your affordable housing plan, including taking that to public hearing and approving it by next summer, early next summer. So there's the adoption right there. Our POCD, we will start more or less concurrently, but our deadline for that's a little further out. We're looking to conclude that by the end of 2022, so we have a little more time, and there's, of course, a lot more work going into that because it's a comprehensive document. In addition to that, we've been asked to assist the town with the VTD zoning regulations and doing a review of the town zoning to see if there are any other opportunities there, and of course, any sort of changes for that would also require a public hearing and adoption. So if we go on to our next slide, we'll walk you through those elements one by one. We plan on meeting with you on a monthly basis to review work done, to chart out work, and really come to agreement on what needs to be done and what direction you'd like to take things in, and we anticipate having monthly project calls with town staff as well. Our community engagement, we've proposed a pretty comprehensive effort, and we're really hoping that we'll be able to return to in-person meetings as things look like they're hopefully moving in that direction. However, we have planned for and scoped for a balanced approach that includes some virtual meetings if need be. We want to build a campaign around this, which means do a really good job of making the public understand what this process is all about, make it very accessible to them, make sure information's available on the town's website, and use that as a hub for information. Promote the planning effort through your traditional media, local press, but also social media as well. That can be very effective. And as I mentioned, we'd really like to do some in-person meetings in different types of formats, whether it be very small group formats, such as a focus group, or a larger topic-based meeting, or workshop, which we call thematic meetings. In addition to that, we envision at least one large public virtual meeting, and given the size of what we're anticipating for some of these larger meetings, we're anticipating that would be virtual right now, but you know, there's a potential that could be in-person as well, if conditions allow. Of course, with all this, we have public presentations and public hearings towards the end of the process to present what is being forwarded for an approved plan. As I mentioned, online engagement has really always been an important part of this work, and the past year and a half has really stressed how important it is, and this past year has really taught us or forced us to be very creative in the way we do outreach to keep people interested and engaged. We have a lot of tools at our disposal, including interactive online survey and mapping tools, and we've also become very good, as you have, at running a Zoom meeting. Right. Existing conditions work is what you might expect. We have a lot of ground to cover here, both, you know, literally and figuratively. You know, the state requires of a POCD and affordable housing plan that we take a look at a bunch of different topic areas that affect future land use and housing, and really your zoning and managing the town properly. And so we'll review all of those areas, and that involves working with the town's mapping consultant, Northeast Geo, to obtain mapping and produce mapping that works well within the plan document and is usable, and then doing a lot of research, really, combing through reports and studies and data, and getting a very strong sense of where you're at, and almost equally important is to take a look at the trends, and particularly in some of the census data and other data for which we have information going back years, or if not decades. To really take a look at the trends, to not only know where you're at, but in what direction are you going, which way things are trending, whether it's with respect to population or housing availability, whatever it may be. So as I mentioned, a document review, and there's been, there are no shortage of policy, regulatory, or planning documents for and in Berlin, at least not which is all the planning work that's gone into the Hartford line and the Kennedy County Station. So we want to get familiar with all of that, and of course, you have a plan of conservation and development, which is, you know, eight or nine years old now, and there's a lot of information there that's still very relevant, so we want to begin with that, and then other regulations and documents, such as your zoning regulations and capital improvement plans, and all that information is really relevant to what we're doing. We'll take, as I mentioned, we're going to take a look at your demographic and socioeconomic trends, and one of the things we found most interesting is that Berlin has had incredibly steady growth since about 1970. A year, a year after year, decade after decade, it's been very steady, and that's a chart in the top right, and that suggests you have a pretty sustainable community with respect to growth and development, and so we'll want to build upon those strengths. Housing is a very important part of this equation, especially considering that we are also producing an affordable housing plan, so we want to make sure we understand what your housing assets are and what your needs are, and in like many communities, your size, your age, and of your location being proximate to some bigger communities and cities, a lot of your housing stock is single-family, yet at the same time, you have a very good share of affordable housing. If we go to the next slide, we'll see that 9.24% of your housing quality is state-qualified affordable housing, and the state is a very strict definition of form for that, and that's a very good number, because the state's mandate or the state's goal for communities is 10%. So you're just a little shy, and our affordable housing plan will take a look at how we can close the gap for you as a community, and more importantly, seek opportunities to provide housing in Berlin that meets the needs of your existing residents, of seniors who want to downsize, of young adults who would like to move out of mom and dad's house and stay in town. So for all those reasons, it's important work. Economic development is incredibly important in any community. It helps balance the tax rolls, it provides jobs, it's part of a healthy balance of any community. And Berlin is really incredibly well situated to support economic development. When you take a look at the access you have to highways, to rail, proximity to three cities that you board, you have incredible location, and industrial is zoned areas with available property. So there are a lot of positives you have going for you, and those are all the things we want to take a look at as we're reviewing the economic development factors and potential in Berlin. And the town, we have noticed, has been extremely proactive with respect to economic development, and the town in fact has a property viewer where you can view available industrial and commercial properties, and not too many communities have that sort of thing. So we know we're working with a community that's very competent in this area. Land use, of course, is the foundation for any plan and conservation and development, and, you know, what we see in Berlin, if you take a look at this map in the background here, all of that green is undeveloped land. It's wooded or wetlands or in its natural state in some form or another, but it's all undeveloped. The red is developed property, and the yellow is turf, it's athletic fields and lawns and that sort of thing. So your community has a tremendous amount of open space, which tells us a couple things. There's a lot that needs to be preserved and continued to conserve, but you also have opportunity and potential for growth. You are not built out. All right, next slide. Zoning. Zoning, of course, is the set of regulations you use to manage development, and we've been asked to review your BDT, which is a floating zone that enables mixed-use development up and down the Berlin Turnpike and your other commercial zones. Not too many properties, maybe one or so, have utilized this tool, so we've been asked to take a look at the regulations, see how well they're working, and make any relevant changes to them. In addition to that, we'll be reviewing the regulations as a whole. We have a decent amount of experience doing this type of work. We're currently working with the city of Bristol to rewrite their zoning regulations from top to bottom, and I think we can really help you in this capacity. Mobility, you know, as I mentioned, you're an incredibly well-connected community for the automobile and rail as well, but you have your challenges as a suburban community with providing multimodal connectivity. What we mean by that is accommodating bicyclists and pedestrians, and so we think there are some opportunities there to do a little more work to better accommodate other types of trips in Berlin, which helps keep cars off the road at the same time. So we look forward to looking into that with you. And infrastructure and facilities, so here we're talking beyond transportation, we're talking about all the town's facilities, whether it's the library here, or athletic facilities, bridges, any type of infrastructure that the town is responsible for maintaining or owns, and we want to get an idea of where all of that infrastructure is in terms of maintenance and needs and capital investment, and make sure we point to any needs you have as a community along that way. In addition, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but sustainability is one of our core missions as a firm, and when we talk about sustainability, it's not just what we all associate with sustainability, which is environmental sustainability, but it's also sustainability from the perspective of can you sustain your operations, the level of service that you provide, the affordability of living in your community, are all of those things sustainable as you're trying to achieve everything else it is that you need to do and meet all of your mandates? So it's a broad perspective on sustainability, and we want to make sure that your infrastructure is sustainable as well. And so we've worked with a lot of communities that are making investments in that area, whether it be rooftop solar on school buildings and municipal buildings, or, you know, reducing their stormwater overflows and that sort of thing. Open space, we just passed by open space and environmental resources, of course, sustainability is critical to that, and preserving, maintaining that open space and enhancing your local ecosystems is a big part of that, and we have an acologist on staff that's assigned to this project that will take a look at your needs and see where the opportunities are to enhance those local ecosystems. And all this ties into the MS4 permit, which, you know, which is a state mandate that you, you know, maintain a certain level of water quality and minimize the impact of stormwater runoff, and so our work will seek to help you continue to be in compliance with that permit. Cultural and historic resources, you are a community that is rich in cultural and historic resources, whether it be historic houses, a historic rail station, a museum, and other cultural institutions, and all representatives from those different constituencies need to be represented, and we need to meet with them to understand what the needs are in town and make sure that the plan addresses those needs. All right, so that's all what we're doing. Now the question is, how do we do that, and how do we present and organize this information? We like to first start with establishing a broad vision, and that takes time, and it comes through a lot of conversations with you and the community, but really, in short, we want to figure out what do you want as a community, what do you want for Berlin, and who are you, and where do you want to be in 10 years? And that's what the vision is. Sometimes it's a sentence, or a paragraph, or really just a few words that capture who you are and what you want to be. And then everything we do after that should really follow that vision and fall in line with it, and we measure everything we do against it. So within a plan, we typically develop goals, and that's what you want to achieve, and that goes supported by strategies or policies. That's how you achieve it, and then the actions are the very specific steps that you take to get there, and that's typically how we organize a plan, and of course, we have some flexibility in how we go about this. The document itself, we want it to be very intuitive. It really needs to be accessible to a large audience, not only the Planning and Zoning Commission, but elected officials, other committees and commissions, other stakeholders, residents, applicants, developers, you name it. This plan needs to be usable and accessible to everyone. That way, it's understood where you want to go as a community and how you plan on getting there, and for that to happen, we have to be very careful about how we organize the information, and we want it to be as intuitive and as user-friendly. and we want it to be as intuitive and as user-friendly. We just got some feedback on the mic. Okay, uh if you flip through. And and we we work with a number of communities in doing this and and we design plans that are usable on screen as PDFs and that worked very well as a as a printed uh version as well. So in developing the DOC, we have all these topic areas and we need to organize it into a a narrative that makes sense. We we don't want it to be just broken up into disparate sections. And and that's the challenge of the work is to wrap our head around all this information and and put it together and into a a narrative that that really tells the story of what it is you want to achieve and how you'd like to achieve it. And and uh if we go to the next slide, I'll walk you through that. Uh so typically, we'll take a month or two and we'll focus on a topic area within that period of time so that we're not too scattered in the process. For example, housing, I anticipate we'll spend a month or two on affordable housing. And then we'll move on to economic development, land use or zoning and zoning, mobility, et cetera. And we can organize this in whatever order makes sense for you. The point being is we are focused on one topic at a time. And then for each, within each one of those month or two periods, we go through a process and that's we share what we found with you, uh you review the work, you know, give it some feedback. We go out and do a little more homework in response to what you told us. I mean, we prepare a a so some draft uh content for you, that draft section of of the of the plan. And then you review that and then we set it aside and we move on. And then at the end of this process, we ultimately come back because as we learn more, as we continue to go through, it affects decisions that we made earlier or information we had earlier. So we come back through towards the end. Um so that's our process. It's uh we we're we're, as I described last week when we we interviewed with the committee, uh we like to be very structured in our work, uh that really helps keep things organized and moving forward. At the same time, we we remain flexible because every community is different, your needs are different, and you have different constituents and we want to make sure we're responsive to to your needs. So with with that being said, uh I I want to leave you enough time to to ask us any questions uh at all.
All right, thank you very much. Um I know that this is just uh the first step in a long process. Let's look ahead. Um I do want to, does anyone have any questions at this point? Um because I I do believe, don't don't worry, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we need some sort of acknowledgement? This is uh that we've gone through the selection of planning that the committee has decided during the planning, it's already sort of given the nod. And hopefully, we'll get the, we have to send this on to the council.
Right.
Uh for blessing, correct? Before we can really get into the
Right.
Uh the weeds with them.
Projects need, the town manager needs to be able to move towards contracts. And the town council has to authorize that. So your recommendation to select um one of the consultants goes to the town council.
Okay, all right. Do we have a, do we have a recommendation or do we just, do we have to do a straw poll or?
Yeah, it would be best to get a vote. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So do I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend uh HI Studio to the town council for uh being our consultant for the plant conservation and the affordable housing.
Okay, terrific.
I'll second that. And yours.
Yep, so we have Brian Rogan made the motion and yours, uh Diane Driscie seconded for the discussions. All those in favor, I think we do a roll call. Do we have to do a roll call?
Probably best. Yeah, um George Miller.
Hi.
Diane Driscie.
Hi.
Tim Ziegman.
Hi.
Brian Rogan.
Hi.
John Viele.
Hi.
Steve Womack.
Hi.
Andrew Lee Nanny.
Hi.
Steve Biella Jr.
Hi.
All right, terrific. Thank you. All right, again, congratulations. And just got to put this on to our town council so we get their their blessing and then we're off and running.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate the opportunity to work in Berlin. Thank you very much.
Word to working with you. All right, good night.
All right.
Okay, next up, um uh we're going back to the uh, we're gonna roll with the agenda. Is or is there any adjustments here, Maureen?
Um no, that was the only, um the first item that you announced was the only adjustment to the agenda of the public guarantee.
Okay, all right. So the next item is the facade application of Bill Pravala, uh ten eighty-three Farmington Avenue LLC, including signing and windows for an existing multi-tenant commercial property at ten eighty-three Farmington Avenue in CCD two zone. And who do we have here for the applicant?
Christopher Edge, Economic Development Director, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin. Um he was not able to make it this evening. Um in your packet, you will see um anybody that has a little history. No, this is the old Hatfield Building, um has gone through numerous tenants. Bill Pravala, who is also the owner of Bella, purchased the building. We're going to do a facade improvement. Essentially, at this point, we can keep the brick and above it will be a sand type of finish of a stucco. Um good thing too is it is going to be a look similar to what Dynasty and Kensington Market have done. It is going to have the breakout with the boxes. So essentially, we'll have a large box if you get to, let's see, two more slides ahead if you put it up. Right, oh, we're Dynasty Jewelry. So at the top, where it says Dynasty Jewelry there, it'll have three boxes like that, one above each tenant. So the good thing too is it'll have more of a breakout. Right now, essentially, it looks like a big gray box. Good thing is it's gonna break it up, it's gonna give it some definition. Um and he's looking to, again, he bought the building, he's looking to invest in it to stay downtown. Um he does have two good tenants, longtime family-owned businesses, Drain Doctor Academy. So the good thing too is he's looking to make an investment down here. And this will put us close to the end of our facade money, um including the next one you're gonna be hearing in a couple of minutes. But the good thing too, I've been working closely with Bill and uh he's given me quite a bit of information and is looking to move ahead on this and looking to get your blessing or any questions you may have on it. Um I think it's tremendous because it's currently probably one of the more tired-looking buildings we have on Farmington Avenue right now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Just one comment?
Yep, please.
If he's coming to us for a facade, it would be awesome if he could cut us lawn once a week, as opposed to two feet high grass. If he's coming to us for money for a building. I mean, I normally try to keep it within my thought process on what they're applying for, but I mean, when he comes to the town asking for a bunch of money, he's got to at least cut the lawn so it looks good coming up Farmington Avenue.
Okay, so you're talking about this particular?
This particular.
Thank you.
Is there any landscaping in there? Is he proposing anything?
Right now, there has not been any landscaping that he was proposing. Um I believe the sidewalk goes up to the building. Um I could definitely talk to him about some planters. I think he would be willing to do that. But as of this plan, there is no landscaping because there are no, no opportunity without doing a bunch of concrete breaking, essentially.
Other than the tall grass, which maybe some variety of tall grass, excuse me.
Maybe I'm missing the the design.
Maybe, maybe Steve, you're missing the beauty of it. All right, well, the point we'll take it. Anyone else? Any other comments? Yes, Maureen, I'm sorry.
No, staff had the tall grass comment as well. Um and um I just want clarification if the, if everyone's um pleasure is, is the parapet or cornice at the top? Is that in this? Because that's what they're doing or is it just the boxes around the signage, you know?
Um I believe from the picture, I think if you go back one item, I believe there is going to be the the parapet on the top.
Oh, right, the edge of it, you can see that.
Right there, so we'll have a little bit of an overhang on it, yes.
So there will be some articulation up there. I wanted to make sure.
His his goal essentially was to make it look a lot like Dynasty and what Kensington Market is building next to them, which if you look at both of them, I think there's pictures in here, they both come out very, very nice.
It's just a front facade on this building.
It's gonna be the front facade and the side that faces, we bring the road.
Okay, so, no, faces the next building.
Well, face the next building, but in the in the direction of the written road is what I mean.
Oh, that's a long ways away.
Yeah, it is, but I say, I don't know east, west, south and.
But if the one that faces the road that you would see.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, so the stucco is gonna go on the top like?
Of course, it will be just.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Deers.
Deers.
Okay. What are they gonna have for lighting there?
I.
On the side, are they gonna have lighting on the signage?
I believe if anything, we will have them do gooseneck, but he has not mentioned anything to be about lighting.
So the Farmington Avenue Design Standards would um encourage the gooseneck. Um they are not proposing with this application any changes to the signage, the facade application. It is purely for the, what was it, I'm sorry, the
Structure.
The the structure, the stucco, that that top piece is what they're looking for, the facade funds to do.
Of Dynasty Drilling look, outlook look, and you can see the wire right on that picture there, that where the gooseneck for that.
Yeah, the gooseneck for kind of to.
That's Kensington Market, yeah.
So if he's proposing the same eaves and uh frontage on that, then uh he should be proposing uh someone or signage and and the gooseneck lighting.
I I have lawn planters and gooseneck lighting on my list to discuss with.
I think so. Anyone else? So I'll entertain your kind of motion. No more questions or comments.
Make a motion to approve um the facade improvement proposed for ten eighty-three Farmington Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Driscie. Do we have a second?
Um well, that's of course subject to staff comments and review. And um they would have to come there uh at a later time with the signage and lighting proposal, right?
At this time, they're not cha- proposing to change any of the lighting or signage as far as in this, this application.
Right, terrific. Thank you, Ms. Driscie. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Brian Rogan, for the discussion. And all those in favor?
Uh.
Do we need a roll call?
No, I think you're good.
All right.
Here, it's up for Steve Biella. But he's preceded actually, so I didn't realize that.
Okay, no roll call. That's good for input. All right, terrific. Next is the facade application of Merced Chikun Janji for Chikun Janji LLC, including painting and siding as existing Forteno's Restaurant, two forty-six Gilbert Road in CCD one zone. I'm sorry if I, did you just?
Close it off.
How do you pronounce?
I forgive you. Next time, I'm happy to say.
We're 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 gonna have to learn it though because the new owner of uh Cornerstone has the same last name.
Chicken, chicken. Obviously.
I'm sorry.
Chicken.
Chicken's fine. So I have the commission members again, present two forty Kensington Road. I'll uh kind of start the process and Mike can kind of add to it. Um the side of the building that you see when you come into the property um has taken quite a bit of beating over time. And actually, this picture, it actually looks better than it really does. Um the goal right now is to have that repaired as well as to add um a stone veneer on the base. So essentially, the bottom three or four feet will match the front of the building. Um and Mike can add some information, but we've been talking about this for a while. I'm really excited about it because I was also there for lunch today and had an amazing chicken marsala if you've never had it, you need to try it. So let Mike step up and add anything else if you want.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so this is the first step that we're doing, the one uh when you buy the, when you come to the pipeline. So you see that right, right inside building? So that's one that we're doing right now. So uh you're gonna start from the bottom like four feet that stone and then whatever how it goes down to the edge. Um two different painting. Also, what I'm planning to do, um these comments there, they're now they're like the light red, whatever, or they could be white, so they could match like those comments at the front. So it's gonna be probably better design, I think, for the building. Next step, I'm putting this next step in the future, I hope. It's a prompt. You see that where I'm trying to do the door? And a little like uh wall, four feet wall, so we can maybe also have a patio there with umbrellas and tables outside.
Okay, so you're gonna keep the front door, the front door?
Front door to keep front door, but change the front door. You see how it's on top of the picture, it's brown?
Yes.
Then how are we gonna do that? Provide that stuff, so a little bit different.
Oh, this could be nice.
Okay, uh so that's a step that we're looking at maybe if everything worked out with the zoning. Uh Maureen, I did reach state, I don't know if this give you any information. Uh so I'm not one that had, you know, I'm playing with it.
I was gonna say, what 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 are we doing? We'll do this right now. We'll we'll go without a second discussion only because Maureen needs to look at the plant first.
Okay, so lying is already there. I don't know.
So Mike, you're just kind of cleaning up the 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 side of the building?
No, it's supposed to be with a stone on the bottom.
The stone from the bottom.
And after, you know, that bit of zone and by the takeout everything, all that to be do to be fixed.
Oh, that was okay.
Well, that's the whole takeout area.
All that area, all this side that you see coming coming into the pipeline.
So put this.
Then it's then it's supposed to paint all the building down.
Gotcha.
I do. Oh, I see. So all the old dress, everything.
Yes.
Wonderful.
If you're painting the whole side all the way down, uh the building in the back, how they can see it in that picture. Used to be three star, let me make myself real old. Uh but uh that building in the back, that would be painted to the same color.
Everything's separate.
Everything will be the same, so that I mean, that needs a.
That's not, that's really new new stuff.
Okay, beautiful.
No, it's gonna be stone, well, stone is gonna be here.
Yep.
And stucco, new stucco and painting here and back and the side just painting, other side.
So the takeout area, is that gonna be?
Takeout is totally fixed, Brian.
Is it gonna be painted or is it gonna be?
No, no, stucco and and it.
Are you putting stone there too?
Yes, everywhere from 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 this corner building.
Yes.
From all the way down, corner from
Yeah.
From the end of the takeout section, all the way down.
All.
So it's gonna be stone except it's likely for, it's gonna start with the four feet here.
Yes.
And whatever how it goes to the angle here.
Yeah, because you do have that pitch on the building.
Yes, yes.
So if I may, if you look at the top picture, there's no stone shown on the side wall. The bottom picture shows the side, the the stone, um the front corner being um per his comments, four feet high and then it'll gradate down as the driveway goes up in the back to to match. And then the whole that side, if I understand the proposal correctly, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, will then be restuccoed with the painting of the uprights, um a lot similar to the front, the new stucco and um and the rest of the paint on the building. So the before is on top, the after is on the bottom.
Yep.
And sorry, the generation of copied pictures is, this was a real hard one to get a decent resolution of the line. Or make that happen.
And then the, and then the stone wall that you have in front, you're gonna be adding that?
Um.
Is that part of the facade?
No, that, no, no, that's the next step.
Oh, okay, all right, so we're just.
That's the next step because right now, uh the one, uh proposed like any one, every one, it's only this side here all the way from end of the takeout to the front here.
Okay. All right, so that's the only thing that we have to consider right now.
Because this is part of the facade improvement program, so therefore that's the 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 funding that is allocated and is requested at this time to go and undo that.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Any questions from the commission? Further questions from the commission? Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if um the entrance to the takeout area is going to um also have a similar appearance to the entrance, either with an overhang or an improvement um to that door, to that entrance. Um I know myself, when I visit your establishment, uh as you're looking at that takeout area, there's a a door that uh if you're facing the takeout area that's frequently open and it looks like it goes into um like an open area. Uh the door is often left open. Um it's, to me, as a customer, it has an unkept kind of a look, so is there gonna be any improvement made to that area?
Uh you're talking about the door uh between the takeout and between the wall? Between the four door, takeout door and the door?
Kind of a notch.
Yeah, that door is actually, there is. Yeah, that door is actually, there is just like the, it's a freezer, outside freezer. And it's a, just like storage only keep, you know, the garbage to be taken and, and hide and stuff. So it's really not playing right now to do anything there except stucco and fix the maybe door so they can keep the door closed all the time, that's all.
Um, the only other question I have is whether or not you would make any improvements or changes to lighting?
To lighting? It was, I'm actually, we have a planning, next, next step, to do the patio. With the permanent patio next to, on that side of the building in a, in a future. So lighting is gonna be next step with the other plan. Depends how it's gonna need it, if it's gonna need it to go on top or be working down the next step. I mean, I'm hoping for next step.
Cleaning up the front, which is a great improvement inside. But we've talked about that takeout area. And I was wondering if you see the arch over your front door, with a hole, couple holes, okay? If you could do arch over the, the takeout area with Port Feenoys takeout on the side, on the thing. Just to make it look the same, you know, and, and it would class up that takeout area. Just put a little, you know, arch over it.
Almost like a awning?
Like awning or something, but, but says takeout area or whatever on it. You know, same color probably, that red.
Is it the same color? Oh, you mean on top, like coming in?
Yeah, well, I'm with the takeout areas. Let me put something over the, the takeout area that says takeout on it. Designating that area, that's where you go instead of walking in the front door, walking through the old building. Go just take out, which, which, when I've gone there to get takeout, I just forget about the takeout area and I walk in the front door and I have problem. Then they got to walk all the way back there to get it. Uh, so, you know.
I know.
A troublemaker, yeah, because it, I gotta back in the.
Next time, Mike, just send him back to the side of the right door.
Yeah, we can, we can sort of, as a, maybe look at a view or something.
Can be, something that says takeout, you know, same color as the book, whatever.
Well, the other, the other thing too, Mike, is that, and I hope you don't, I, because your last name, I haven't.
That's right, Mike, it's good.
So our first use, Mike, the other thing too is that as you have your outside patio now, we're not talking about the future patio, but where your existing patio is, those people have the view of the takeout area. So if you just a little bit, just, you know, for the, the elements. Put a little awning or whatever up there, or just even a rounded facade build out. And it'll just make it a better view for those people who are on the side and happen to be facing that direction, but, but that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, I mean.
Okay, we can, we can maybe change with the guy that doing construction, so that's fine.
Good. But other than that, I think it's, I mean, I don't know, else, is there any other questions?
I really like the improvement of.
Steve Roman?
No.
Andrew? All right, anyone else have any questions? Okay, so.
The only thing I would say, Adam, sure, is that I'm very happy to see this happen. Port Feenoys is a is a staple for a very long time, so thank you.
Let's go sit outside.
My, my only thought would be that, uh, it sounds like you have a second step coming with a nice big patio in the front and on the side. So maybe that awning could be something you could address at that stage where, when you're doing all that work. The way, so just throwing up a quick awning, you can do something nice.
Thanks.
But instead of rushing it now with this, with this grant, maybe be something you consider when you take that second step.
Yes. Any more plans?
Doable.
Yeah, any more planning?
Yeah, exactly. All right, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the facade grant at two forty-six to Winrow.
Thank you, Steve Roman. Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian, Mr. Sima. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, good luck. Congratulations. Nice addition.
You all have a great.
Thanks, you. Yeah, you too. Good evening. All right, onto the old business. We have a site plan application, Supreme Virtual, Brand Neo, Kepkai Properties, L.L.C. construction of a ten thousand square foot, ten minutes office warehouse building. Really decide improvements, the two thirty-nine First Lane Property, the OCH Children's Trust and the General Industries Chuson, OCHI Chuson. This was continued from May sixth, January third. And we have to come into this by the nineteenth this month. Um, so I know that we gave some good positive feedback to the applicant last go around. And is the, is there anyone here to speak for? Okay, terrific.
I am. Serena's here.
Yes.
Can I add something prior?
Yes.
Trying to give an update?
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then have Serena explain more.
Okay, starting from the back.
So hat off the press, I handed out as we walked in, the comments from the town engineer. So because those plans were distributed on Monday to June, after being received Friday afternoon. Um, so we just got these comments. You'll note in his, they have not gone to Serena yet because I got them. Talking for the meeting. Um, I don't know if he's talked to the engineer, I don't believe so. Um, but you'll note in his first paragraph that he notes that the his concerns noted in one, two, and three, all deal with drainage, which included underside storm chambers that he feels can be, and, and he feels those concerns can all be rectified at the pleasure of the commission. After your approval, as a condition of approval, we would like to see those increased in size along with the rest of his comments, which will be entered into the record as distributed to you. Um, and that he feels, well, we did write straight from his comments. We have reviewed the technical information and revised drawings supplied by the applicant on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in response to our previous comments. Several comments have been addressed, but our subsequent review, we offer comments below for the planning and zoning commissions consideration. Note that these can be addressed as approval condition at the PNC's discretion and our department can coordinate with the applicant's engineer on relevant adjustments before final permitting. The fourth comment relates to the street trees that were, the trees along the property, front property line that were added to the plan as a result of our discussion and at the last meeting, your discussion. And you may recall that I expressed a concern that the, the planting strip was a little bit narrow. He has noted that there are, there's infrastructure within that area and he's concerned that the planting of trees in that area may cause an issue. So he's recommending they not be planted there, the trees, the six proposed red oak on the front island. I, however, would recommend that they possibly, or some of them possibly be relocated in, in one, to the terminal island of the parking area along the driveway. Because that, there is planting that should be on the turn. That was no good as well. I just wanted to give you that update. Other than that, she has, they did address the dumpster screening being added, dumpster area screening being added in the back. And the landscape plan is far more clear and delineated with items that they've added. Now, I'll turn it back over to you, Adam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a possibility that in front of the building, if they don't, if, if we do move those trees to the parking island or some of the trees to the parking island, could we still do something in the front, even with like saw grasses or some smaller?
I, I think you could ask that question, Ms. Wang. There is limited area in the front, but there is a small strip. They do have to still be able to walk in that area.
Yeah. Is that a possibility for Supreme?
Uh, but to, to my liking and my personal opinion, I would like to see some, particularly at the entrance corner. We would like to have a mulchet area with, you know, a, a few, kind of an entrance, you know, kind of picker-upper and, you know, a, a place to, to place the sign. But I do know that that area is very narrow, so I think that's gonna be up to the actual landscaper's opinion and advice when we get to, I think probably after building, we'll be able to have a better sense of the area and what would work well there. But we would definitely put what we can to, to give it a, an attractive entrance as we could.
Okay, terrific.
Uh, one comment.
Yes.
On the red oak, I like they're using the tree, but I would recommend maybe not a red oak because that can grow into a very large tree and that'd be an island. I really don't think it's suitable tree. So maybe you can go with something smaller in maturity, maybe like an ornamental tree or something like that.
Sure.
Or short pine even, you know, some, something that doesn't grow high and the roots don't go deep. Because I guess the, the engineers saying that the roots might go against the utilities and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So if you got a short pine, with the balls on the bottom of it, you know, if you pull it up, you work, put back, you know, maybe that type of thing for, because I see those down Denver Road, you know, some sort of pines and stuff like that. Uh, pine or.
Yeah.
So I would, I would just caution about using dense vegetation. I mean, you mentioned straw grass or something like that. That can create almost hedge. It can get very, very high, so you gotta worry about sightlines coming out of the parking lots too. So you need, I would say, small tree also that the, the vegetation is above, you know, a certain height so trees can still see through, have good sightlines to the road coming out of the work pathways, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe just something like a horse machine that crosses the stream with like a bunch of tulips and a little plant or that.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, they do, yeah, exactly.
There's something that if their utilities become a problem.
Oh, yeah.
That they can move out easily and replace, you know what I mean? So if it's not a, a, a year-round thing, it could be flower bed or tulips or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, that, that spruce up there, I just, because of this project, I just drove down Denver Road looking at every building.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm amazed that, that has grown up as a, like a campus area of manufacturing buildings.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, and it's really getting better. The only, only ones that, that bothers me is the city who rents properties. And I'll, but, but, you know, we could yell at them too.
Well, we can have them work with staff if it's just a question of let's see how the layout goes and then we work on the landscaper from there. Because it seems that they're very in tune with doing something and, and just not having a, a square building up there. It looks like you're trying to just make it not an eyesore, but you actually add to what's happening on that strip. And I hope you can understand that that's where we're coming from.
Of course, I understand the curb appeal is very important for the town and it's important to us as investors also because that's what's gonna attract tenants. And we, we like attractive buildings. We're very proud of, of other investments that we've made. Um, and we, we definitely will be up to par with, with the landscaping that we have in front of us and to the other side of us.
Okay, terrific. Anything else, commissioners? So.
I'll make the motion to approve the.
Oh, you're hot today, huh? Wow, he's on the roll.
With the conditions of public work, public works and engineering department as well as our own staff.
Okay, terrific. We have a motion by Ryan Rogan.
Second.
Oh, we have a second from?
Michelle Lemon.
Oh, she may have it. Hey, there you go.
Thank you.
Enter's in there for one.
All right.
Okay. Uh, further discussion, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Looking forward to working with you.
Well, no.
Thank you.
All right, excellent. All right, Maureen, do we have anything else? That's pretty much wrapping up our agenda for this evening.
I just have a couple of announcements.
Okay, announcements.
And I'm kind of calling announcements today, but.
All right.
So there has been some legislative changes that will come into effect over the course of the next several months. I'll go first, I believe, or some of them. I will try to get those, give them, send them to them, some of the, yeah. They're bigger, smaller, they went back and forth quite a bit with changes, so that affects only, not all the legislation that's passed this session, but the ones that have been of particular interest and subject to a lot of discussion. Also, please, I, we assembled the materials for the special meeting that will be held by Zoom. If you grab a packet on your way out, and then when we get back to staff comments and we have those, I will just email those to you.
Okay, so.
So they'll just be written on the app.
So the twenty-ninth will definitely be Zoom, not.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's the, I scheduled, I scheduled it and posted it in the paper properly. I'm sorry for that error in posting.
Oh, no, 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 I just wanna make sure. I don't know if I'm supposed to be here or hopefully home.
You're not, you're not too busy, I think.
Please don't mind it. When this one's done.
I hope you gave her Zoom lessons.
I, there's, there's a training video.
I do, I do, do, the others, are you sure? Oh, I'm ready without half, so.
So that's right, it's gonna be four forty-five and Adam's gonna call his new job, Mr. Maureen, anytime.
Yeah. I got it numbered. I text him.
Smart move, Maureen.
Yeah, I got it. Maureen, we're gonna change it.
You got that now.
I was wondering why it was earlier.
And then some of these executive orders have changed or been extended right now, the, you know, meetings, at least and the, and the ability to take advantage of the additional decision time, you know, the extra ninety days that they had worked in, is up until June thirtieth at this point. Those, the legislature will do something different, but we are, as a town, expecting to continue to close the meetings hybrid and there may very well be legislation coming up after that. So we will be continuing to do Zoom, but in person so long as we're allowed.
All right, terrific. Meeting's over.
Getting back.
Okay, so that's it?
That's it. I guess, don't forget your packets.
So don't forget your packets and.
Save me gas.
I'm just trying to think if there's anything else we need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that's it, that's it. I knew there was something. All right. So Adam, we just wanna say what a pleasure it's been to work with you.
Couldn't bribe you with a little raises?
I know. I, I. No, what I'll do is, let's adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting, please.
Let's go ahead. I'll call for adjournment at, it's gonna be eight oh three, so who would that, anyone who motioned?
I have a motion.
All right, Diane Juris, he has a motion, has a second.
Second, Michelle Lemon.
Oh, all right, there you go, Andrew. All righty, all's in favor?
Aye.
So call some votes. Good night, everyone. Bye.